The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. This evening, we are honored to have with us Reverend Justin Miller of Whitefels Memorial United Methodist Church who will give our invocation.
Let us pray. Most loving God, we thank you for Denison and for the people who have been chosen to serve the people of this city. We thank you for all the great things that are happening in our city and we pray that great things continue to happen to every citizen of Denison. As we come together to serve, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and especially for this assembled council. I pray that you give them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues and a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, and a personal peace in their lives and joy in their task ahead. I pray for the tasks set before them today and pray that you give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in Denison. We ask this as your sons and daughters in Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. This evening, we have with us from Denison Girls Truth 403, we have Cadence Hayes, Ozzy Epperson, and Serena Gleaves who are going to lead us, and we have a fourth one?
No.
No, okay. You must be the scout leader. Okay. Do you want to tell us who you are?
Christina Rubble.
Hi Christina. Okay. They're going to lead us in our pledge this evening, anytime you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to be Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have a very special recognition. You know, we are always pleased to have the opportunity to honor those within our organization who are recognized for exemplary work. This evening, it is our honor to recognize the Denison Public Library. The library has received the 2022 Achievement of Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. That would have been easier to say TMLDA and affiliate of the Texas Municipal League. Each year, TMLDA confers awards for outstanding contributions by public libraries to their communities. Of the 542 public libraries in Texas, only 73 received this award in 2022. This is the ninth year, count them, ninth year in a row that our Denison Public Library has received this state recognition. To successfully receive the Achievement of Library Excellence Award, the applicant must exhibit excellence in each of 10 categories: service to underserved populations, innovation and effective marketing, collaborative efforts with community organizations, enhanced service to the public, literacy support for all ages, support for digital inclusion, support for workforce development, cultural, topical, and educational programming for adults and families, professional staff training, and other initiatives that speak to the library's From our library director, Mr. Greg Mitchell, he had this to say about this award. It is an honor to be recognized by our peers and the Texas Municipal Library Directors with the award for excellence. This is the ninth year in a row that this honor has been bestowed on the Denison Public Library, which demonstrates that the commitment to service is deeply engraved in our library team. We have accomplished some great things together and we look forward to a great future in a great city. I've said it before and I say it again, this is the best job I've ever had and it's in the best town in Texas. Greg? I totally agree with you. And from our Director of Parks and Recreation, Justin Eastwood, who oversees the library functions. Thanks to the library's diligence and commitment to exceptional quality of life, our city has received the Texas Municipal League Library Excellence Award again this year. This award will be nine years in a row for Denison. This is another proud moment for our community and our team as we strive to deliver services that enhance our community. And this is what you see throughout our entire organization. But for tonight, we are recognizing the library and their staff for all the hard work that they've done that has allowed our library to be recognized for 10 years in a row. So Greg, if you and your team would like to come forward, I'd love to be able to present this award to you. Congratulations to all of you. This is quite amazing. It reads, "2022 Achievement of Library Excellence Presented to Denison Public Library, awarded by Texas Municipal Library Directors Association." You should all be very proud of all that you've done to be able to do this, and I'm sure, Greg, that you have a place of honor to hang the ninth one, right? Okay. There you go. Thank you very much.
Oh, can't move in.
Sarah, I can't see.
She knows you by name.
Oh my goodness. All right. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card and present it to the city clerk before reaching this point in our agenda. Ms. Wonton, do we have any requests to speak cards?
No.
Therefore, we'll have no public comments. Item four, consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance adopting the North Central Texas Council of Governments, or NCTCOG, Integrated Stormwater Management Program, or ISWM program. Ms. Sterns?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited to bring this ISWAM to you tonight. This would replace our current stormwater manual that was adopted in 2017. Our current construction standard details and our current Public Works Design Manual both reference ISWAM. ISWAM is, it was developed by the North Central Texas Council of Governments with a number of engineers and cities that helped them develop this and keep this program going. It's really the best that's out there as far as stormwater management goes. It's also updated regularly with different state and federal compliance and guidelines. So, these are the three things that we're primarily adopting, the criteria manual, their hydraulics manual, and their hydrology manual, but it is a whole program with lots of training, lots of resources for staff and for engineers and developers in our community. So when we looked at updating our stormwater manual, ISWAM just stood out above anything else we could do, including just creating our own again. It's very comprehensive, it is updated with, based on new compliance measures, based on best practices, and a lot of our development community is already familiar with it. On the screen, there are a number of cities that participate and use ISWAM. The list was too big to fit on one slide, so a lot of folks that do development and building and engineering in North Texas are already familiar. And that's the presentation.
Questions for Ms. Sterns? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the North Central Texas Council of Governments, or NCTCOG, Integrated Stormwater Management Program, or also called ISWAM program.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow for the use of bar for GCAD property ID number 142547, also known as 101 East Main Street, Suite 135, case number 2023-039CUP. Ms. Tate?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Hope you're all doing well and hope you've been getting outside to enjoy the spring weather. This evening, we have a conditional use permit to put before you. The applicant is requesting this use for a bar. It is the Green Growler Sports Bar, Tap House and Grill, which is located in the Katy Depot. Any bar that is located within the central area requires a conditional use permit. That's why it's coming before you tonight. We require that they indicate the zoning. Of course, it's within the central area as well as the commercial historic overlay district. This area does not require any parking, and as you can see, they are taking up the north end of the Katy Depot, and they are also utilizing the space, which is the outdoor space on the east side of that north section of the building. The applicant has stated that they will not be operating past 11:00 PM. Most nights will be up until 9:00 PM. However, during the summer, they may choose to extend those hours up into 11:00 PM. The tenant also has a lease agreement with the landlord that does not allow them to extend past 11:00 PM. The applicant is here, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval without additional conditions at their Tuesday, April 11th meeting.
Will you repeat again what you said about the hours of operation?
Sure. The applicant stated that they will only operate up until 9:00 PM. However, they may extend hours of operation during the summer until 11:00 PM. The lease agreement with their landlord does not allow them to operate past 11:00 PM at any point in time.
Okay. We'll get to you in just a minute. Okay, so the hours of operation that the applicant submitted are 9:00 PM?
Correct.
But the lease agreement allows them to operate till 11:00 PM, but that does not negate the 9:00 PM that's specified by the applicant.
Correct. But that comes back to you to make those conditions, to put those conditions in place. That's why this body has the final say in the conditional use permit.
But I think what Ms. Tate's saying is that initially, his plan is until 9:00 PM with the intention of extending it up to 11:00 PM at a later time.
Potentially. It's summer hours.
Okay.
He's not looking to be locked in on 9:00 PM, but we do know that there's a firm 11:00 PM maximum with his lease agreement.
Correct.
Do you follow that? Yeah.
I follow you, but if his request is to be open until 9:00 PM, that doesn't give him the right to open until 11:00 just because the lease says 11:00. So, okay.
Any other questions for me?
Okay. Are you through?
I am through. Do you have any other questions?
Really confused here. All right. So is there any, are there any questions from council to Ms. Tate?
So do we need to amend this then to 11 o'clock?
Well, I think that depends on whether or not we want to, that we want year-round operation hours until 11 o'clock. You've just built 13 lofts up above, so I don't know. I think that's for the council to decide. Okay, let me open the public hearing so Dennis can speak. Okay, hold on, hold on. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Okay. If you'll come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dennis McCabe, and I'm the owner of Green Growler at 101 East Main Street, Suite 135. And I'd like to clarify the hours, okay? My permit for TABC permits me to go till midnight. We are open from 11:00 in the morning till 10:00 PM currently, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Fridays and Saturdays, we're open till 11:00 PM. The agreement with the landlord is that music will end one hour before we close and on Fridays and Saturdays will not exceed 11:00 PM. So we could be open till midnight, but there is no music, no band, no entertainment permitted in the space after 11:00 PM, and that's in agreement with the landlord.
Okay.
Because, see, we got Red Rock right down the road that has till 2:00 AM. The place that was there before, Tupelo, also had a late night permit till 2:00 AM for every night of the week. I know there are lofts going up, and that's why we came together, we as in myself and Marcus, came together on agreement not to have music go past on Fridays and Saturdays only till 11:00 PM. Right now, it ends at 10:30 is what music goes to. It's 7:30 to 10:30 Friday and Saturday night. It's a single artist, it's not a band outside at this point in time on the patio.
Okay. I think we get all of that, but your application stated that you would be open until 9:00 PM.
Well, that's a mistake then, because I don't think I put 9:00 PM on the hours of the application. 9:00 PM would be an hour before our closing, so thus the latest any entertainment could go, and that's when food service stops also, is an hour before we close.
Do you want to clarify?
That was not clear to stop. That was not clear to stop.
Because the application stated that they would be open until 9:00 PM? Okay. So your request is to be open until when?
10:00 PM, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Oh, sorry, 10:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, till midnight at the latest on Friday and Saturday with music stopping at least one hour before we close.
Okay.
And that's what I thought it was all along.
This is the, okay, but if that was not clear to staff, if your application stated 9:00 PM, then that was not clear, and the purpose of a conditional use permit is to set forth those conditions of operations. So, you know, it's up to the council to determine the, if that is, we need to specify
Oh, I understand.
within the conditional use permit for the hours of operation. So, 10:00 PM on Monday?
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday.
Correct.
And?
It would be as late as midnight.
12:00 PM?
Right now, it's 11:00 o'clock, but we would like to be able to go to midnight on Friday and Saturday nights with music stopping at 11:00 PM.
Are you closed on Sunday?
Currently, we are closed on Sunday. If we open on Sunday, we will close at 8:00 PM.
Okay. So you want to stay open till 12:00 on Saturday and Sunday, but music stops at 11:00?
Friday night and Saturday night till midnight. Music stops by 11:00 o'clock. Correct.
And you're closed on Sunday?
Currently, closed on Sundays.
So Mary, does there need to be a specification in there for Sunday hours in the event that he decides to open on Sunday, or does he need to come back and amend the CUP?
If you choose to, that would be up to you. If you do not put Sunday in there, then he will be required to come back before you to get that approval. So if you want to add a condition that on Sunday hours, that would be my recommendation.
So Sunday at 8:00 PM?
Correct. 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
One thought, Mayor. You know, this is a unique, I mean, I totally am on board with why we require this in Central Area District and the CUP and everything else, but in a pro-business mindset and also to protect you, sir, from putting yourself in too big of a box, or too small of a box, I should say. You know, one thought, Mayor, would be is that it sounds like his landlord, I mean, the applicant is not in ultimate control of the premise, right? He has a landlord that is in control of that, who will negotiate and manage the relationship between the tenants, because I know ultimately we're concerned also about the loft residence above, right? But I do think that from a council perspective, you know, maybe we need to leave it a little bit broader and let the landlord and the tenant negotiate that. And I'm assuming, Mrs. Tate, that the CUP would not extend to another tenant in the future, so we're not overcommitting ourselves, right? So it would stop. So that being said, you know, I just think that maybe we ought to make it a little bit broader instead of getting down to the hour and the music and let he, and as long as, I think the general purpose is that we want to establish the fact that we have control over operations later than midnight, right? We're really not worried about anything up until 11:00, 12:00 PM, or 11:00 PM or 12:00 AM. It's really, I think the original purpose when we put this in place was to control the 2:00 AM operations, right, downtown, if you recall that. So, I don't know, that's just my thought. I feel like you may be falling into a trap as far as getting your hours too defined right this minute beyond what the limits of your lease are, and so I would encourage you to maybe modify your request to a little bit broader brush and then have the council discuss, you know what I mean? Does that make, do you agree with that?
No, I think you're making an exception, and then the next time that you have someone come in who wants to put in a bar and they're required to have a CUP, then do we say this is up to the discretion of your landlord?
No, no, no. I'm saying we're still going to establish certain hours, but since we're not dealing with extended hours with, you know, 2:00 AM hours, I'm less concerned about whether it's 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM. I'm just saying, I think we should decide, what do we as a council, if we say we don't want any operations past 11:00 PM in the depot, or 10:00 PM, or 1:00 AM, whatever that number is, I'm just saying, I don't know that we should get down to the, I don't know that we necessarily have to get down to which days and which hours. That's all I was getting at.
So maybe it's just hours of operation up to midnight?
That's what I'm getting at. Right. Are we okay with the fact that his intention is at some point to extend up, as his business continues to grow, to operate until midnight? Are we okay with that? Are we going to say like, even though you have a permit to do that, we personally, as the council, say we don't want any operations at the depot past 11:00? That's all I was getting at.
So in other words, adjust the hours, right? Although I'm not open till midnight or 11:00, adjust the hours now so that I can be open till midnight every night of the week except for Sunday, which I have no intention of going past 8:00?
If that's the ultimate goal as your business grows, that's all I'm getting at. I just, I know that you'll end up being right back here, so I'm just trying to avoid a point of contention when, if all of a sudden you want to be open till 10:00 o'clock on Sundays, is that a point of contention for the council to be open beyond 8:00 PM or not? You know what I mean? That's all I was getting at. I'm just trying to set precedence for future. Once again, typically when we've had this issue and it's been a point of contention, it has been because of extended hours, not inside the midnight or earlier. That's all, just trying to point that out.
So Cameron, does the CUP need to specify days and hours?
I think so. I think if we're going to impose those conditions, we need to have that written in the ordinance. And what we could do is continue this public hearing to a next city council meeting, let the applicant staff go over those hours, rewrite that into the ordinance, and then address it then. Make a recommendation to you, of course, but...
Well, and to that point, when I say that, I don't mean that we don't need to establish the hours, but I'm saying as far as would it be acceptable to say up to such and such time?
Well, we can write it, if it's, so if summer hours are going to be different hours than other hours of the year, then we can put that in the ordinance. We just need to be as clear as possible.
Okay, so it does need to be down to the specifics?
Sure.
No, that's what I was asking. I should, maybe I should have posed more of a question, so I apologize.
So in other words, the hours that I'm applying for have to be specific hours. So if I apply to midnight, does that require me to stay open till midnight or may I close earlier?
I don't think it requires you to stay open, but it's a...
It's just so that I don't pass those hours, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I didn't realize that when filing all this paperwork and...
Well, it's just what you're applying for.
My current hours of operation are Monday through Thursday till 10:00 until 11:00 on Friday, Saturday. So that's what we've been doing, and that's what I was going for, but we close the kitchen an hour before. That's why the 9:00 and the 10:00 o'clock came up. That's when the kitchen, the food service stops.
Yeah, I think what the ordinance would need to say is the last time that you're going to be open, that the establishment is entirely closed.
Correct. So that would be going back to what Christopher was saying is if in some time for the summer, for the summertime, I want to be open till midnight, say four nights a week, just set those now?
Right.
And then in the winter, I just close earlier, and it doesn't have to be approved by you for me to close earlier, correct?
That is correct.
Right. I think the city council might want to be specific with what we're allowing, especially if the application described summer hours versus hours for the rest of the year.
Right. I mean, I've already come to a agreement with the landlord so that we make the tenants happy, and if tenants complain, we'll adjust hours and such as that's required, and because he's planning on other spaces nearby for apartments, we don't want to interfere with that lifestyle of the apartment living, so... But if I was to do that, if I was to adjust my hours for future so I don't have to come back, then yes, I want to be open till midnight each night of the week with music and entertainment stopping at least an hour beforehand, and then Sunday till 8:00 PM. Is what I do.
Okay.
So it sounds like we need to just leave this open like we said, right? And then have it rewritten and then come back next meeting. Is that correct?
Well, we can...
We can always propose it.
We can propose it.
Just do it. Propose it now.
Yeah. So you're saying that you want Monday through Saturday?
Correct. Till midnight.
Till midnight.
With any...
With the music, hold on.
Yep.
With the music last stopping at 11:00.
Correct.
And you want 8:00 closing on Sunday?
Correct.
Discussion from the council.
I'm okay with it. I think that, like you said, Mr. McCabe, there are problems the landlord's...
The landlord's going to let you know.
Yeah.
Those are priorities for him to get those apartments leased as well. So he's definitely going to listen to them. And it sounds like y'all have a good working relationship on it. And that seems like an acceptable agreement to me. What do y'all think?
Fine by me. I was just trying to just highlight, you know, just kind of how we approach it, I guess, if anything. No problem here.
Okay. Mr. McCabe, I have to close the public hearing before we can go on. Is, are there any further questions for Mr. McCabe? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion from council to, for approving the C U P. and the stated conditions of hours?
Mayor, I move to approve a conditional use permit for the use of bar for property located at one oh one East Main Street, Suite one thirty-five, with the following caveats, that it be open, it can be open daily from on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday from eleven to mid, eleven A M. to midnight, with music stopping one hour prior to close. And then on Sunday, hours of eleven A M. to eight P M.
With mus, what? With music stopping one hour prior.
Second.
There is a motion by council member Hander and a second by council member Courtright. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five C., thank you, Mr. McCabe. Item five C., receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance for a conditional use permit to allow for the use of a bar for G C A D. property ID. number one four two five four seven, also known as one oh one East Main Street, Suite one hundred, case number twenty twenty-three dash zero four zero C U P. Ms. Tate?
Okay, this one looks quite similar. However, it's a different suite number also in the Katy Depot. This is a request for a conditional use permit for Stafford House Provisions. It is a retail establishment that's selling wine and cheese, but also has wine on tap. So we, it is considered a bar because they're serving alcohol and that you can buy a glass of wine there. This is also located in the central area, so there are no parking requirements there. And it does require this conditional use permit. They have proposed the hours. This is located on the south end of the Katy Depot, so directly opposite of where the Green Growler was that we just spoke about. I'm going backwards, sorry. And they will also be using the outside sidewalk area for additional space. And they'll go through the process to get the proper permits for that as well. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit as they applied. They applied for hours of eleven to seven on Wednesday and Thursday and eleven to nine P M. on Friday and Saturday. This is a new business endeavor, so keep in mind that their model may change at some point in time. However, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit as applied for. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval without any conditions.
Just a second, Mary.
Mm-hmm.
Did I, did I hear you right? The hours are eleven to ten?
Eleven to seven P M.
Oh, seven. How did I get ten out of, out of seven?
On Wednesday.
And eleven to nine on, on Wednesday, I mean, on Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
No additional hours at this point in time that they foresee.
Okay, questions from council?
The applicant is here.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Will you come forward and state your name and address for the record, please?
Dana Stafford, one oh one East Main Street, Suite one hundred. Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us and consideration. We will be opening a small business, very intimate setting and quiet and kind of the opposite of the other end. So we will also sell retail wine and cheese. And then we will also offer it by the glass. We're super excited to be here. We have been in Denison for many, many years, our family, and we love this place. So we are looking forward to growing with you guys.
Okay, so let's, let's confirm your, your operating hours are eleven to seven on Wednesday and Thursday?
Correct.
And eleven to nine on Friday and Saturday?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Questions from council for Ms. Stafford?
I don't want to open up a can of worms, but with, with Mr. McCabe, you know, we know that his business model's going to adjust to his hours. Do you need us to do that at this time as well or do you want these just locked in?
Well, I mean, we don't mind coming back if we change our minds.
Seven o'clock just seems early to me. It just seems like, I just want to give you more wiggle room on that one, is the one I.
I mean, it, you know, it's such a new business and we have no idea what we're going to be facing in the future.
Your permit is until midnight as well? T V C. permit?
Oh, yes, yes.
So you would have the opportunity to stay open later if you so choose, okay?
Yes, we could.
Yeah, my, my, my recommendation, if I were to have, would just say I would open the parameters just a little bit. I, I think that like a ten o'clock type timeframe would be just so that it gives you, you know, more leeway.
And we would add Tuesday if that would be something that, you know, we could extend that.
I personally, as a council member, don't see any benefit to limiting you that narrowly. And I just see the staff resources of having to reapply and the time and potentially you might have a special event that pops up or whatever it may be. And then all of a sudden, it's like, hey, it's going to take us a month to get this done. I just would recommend maybe revising that and just opening it up a little bit. That's, that's my thought. So, but once again, you are the entrepreneur.
No, no, that sounds like a smart thing to do.
Because y'all aren't offering any kind of live entertainment or anything like that. It's going to be quiet, okay?
No, no.
Mayor.
So Dana, what would you like to do?
I would like to extend it so we don't have to come back. But, you know, that would be, our consideration would be Tuesday through Saturday. We don't have any intentions of opening on Sunday and Monday. But we could expand it to Tuesday with the hours extending.
Tuesday through Saturday. Eleven until?
We can do ten.
Okay.
Eleven to ten. That gives us options.
Yeah, now that we have opened that can of worms, I would prefer that we set those hours as a condition. I don't see that they're necessarily written in the ordinance, but we can add them just like we did on the last one, so. Same thing as we did before.
We intend to specify these within the conditional use permit.
Right.
So. Okay, so you, so you're happy with, with Tuesday through, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, eleven to ten?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further questions from council?
Thank you for choosing Denison.
Yep.
Of course.
And the pictures look amazing, Dana.
Thank you. We're very proud of it.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve hours for the conditional use permit of Tuesday through Saturday, eleven A M. to ten P M. For the use of bar for property located at one oh one East Main, Suite one hundred.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by council member Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Dana. Item six A., receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report presented by Brooks Watson and Company. Ms. Osseball?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Once again, the City of Denison has completed its annual audit, which is required by municipalities in Texas per Texas Local Government Code. The City of Denison is contracted with Brooks Watson and Company for this service. And they have issued a unmodified opinion for the City of Denison's financial statements for the year ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The annual comprehensive financial report is complete and ready for council's acceptance. Louis Breedlove, Senior Manager with Brooks Watson and Company, is here this evening to speak in regards to our audit.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for having me. My name is Louis Breedlove with Brooks Watson. And I've had the pleasure of working with the city for fiscal year twenty twenty-two's audit. For you tonight, there is a bound copy of the audit report. I believe there may be PowerPoint, yep. Which I also have a printed out copy as well, if you care to take notes. But I will be using that to go over the results of the audit. First, I do like to always give you a quick overview of the audit process. So first, we perform the audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. And we break the audit into five phases. So the first phase being the assessment phase. That's where we come out. We walk through any, pretty much any department that has money coming in or money going out. We're evaluating the controls that are in place. We're doing walkthroughs, reviewing their documented processes and procedures. And we also do sample testings for each of those areas to ensure that the activity that we're seeing in our samples matches and is consistent with policies and procedures and controls that are stated. And once we do that, we make any recommendations if we see any room for improvement or efficiencies. And then we move into our risk-based approach. So that's going to be every aspect of the financial statements has a different type of risk, different level of risk, which drives and dictates what type of procedures we need to do. So we evaluate each aspect of the financial statements to, to determine what our audit approach will be for each area of the financials to ensure that we are comfortable with the material accuracy of the financial statements. And next, we move into our compliance testing. So that's going to be our evaluation over the city's compliance with various things such as grants, Public Fund Investment Act, bid requirements, anywhere that, we also review all city council meeting minutes. So if we see anywhere that council approves something that has a compliance component to it, we would evaluate that to see if the city is in compliance with that as well. Then we move into our field work phase. That's going to be after year end, the books are closed and we perform the testing over the numbers for the year. So we'll tie out the balance sheet, confirm with third party wherever possible and also perform cutoff procedures. And then as we're tying out that balance sheet, we are testing the material accuracies of your revenues and your expenses. Then we move into the conclusion phase where we perform various levels of review to ensure that all the procedures completed were appropriate and no additional procedures are necessary and prepare the report in the letters that we have for you this evening. Next, just go over the components of the audit report. So within the audit report, there's the introductory section, followed by the financial section. So that's going to contain the auditor's opinion letter, the management's discussion and analysis. That's going to give you some year-to-year comparison, as well as some budgetary information for the year. Then the financial statements, that's going to contain your fund level statements as well as your government-wide full accrual statements. And behind that is your notes to the financial statements. That's going to contain various levels of detail and notes to provide information concerning the numbers in the financial statements. And then the supplementary information and then the statistical section, various stats for the year, for ten years of activity. Regarding that auditor's opinion letter, there are four possible opinions that we are able to issue as auditors. There's an unmodified, qualified, disclaimed and adverse. And the city did receive an unmodified opinion. It's also often referred to as a clean opinion. And that's the highest level of assurance that we as auditors are able to provide. And I will add that this was the, last, this past year was the eleventh year consecutively that the city did receive the certificate of achievement with the G F O. A. And we fully expect the city to receive it again this next year. Next, just a few financial highlights for you. So just giving you the net position and fund levels for some of these funds and comparing year over year. So overall net position for the city, we saw was eight, just over eighty-six million, that up eleven million for the previous year. That's primarily due to a lot of the infrastructure and development that you all have seen over the past year. Looking at your governmental funds, the general fund, both restricted portion and unassigned portion were up nine hundred thousand and just over a million respectively. That's just due to, one, revenues coming in over the expected budget amount as well as just conservatively budgeting for your expenses and coming under budget on a few of those categories as well. The general bond fund was, we saw a decrease there of seven point six million, leaving a fund balance of three point six million. And that's just, just due to the utilization of those bond funds for the intended projects that you all have approved. And then the other non-major funds, overall combined total of thirteen, seventeen point three million for the year. That's up two point nine million. And all those funds are restricted funds that are being consistently used in accordance with those, of those restrictions and are in line with the budgeted expectations by the city. Concerning the proprietary funds, that's going to be your utility, water service type funds. Those operate more like a business unlike all the governmental funds that are more of a nonprofit function. And so we do look to see, is that fund self-sustaining? So the net operating income was six point seven million. It's up by one point six million from the previous year. So it is self-sustaining and it does look like it's a healthy fund. And then overall, the unrestricted net position for the proprietary fund was seven point four million, slight decrease of eight hundred ninety-one thousand in that category. All right, next is a little bit deeper dive on your general fund. So the policy for the city is, it is the goals of the city to maintain an unassigned fund balance in the general fund between sixty and ninety days of operating expenditures or sixteen to twenty-five percent. And what that means is if the city were to have consistent expenses in the next year, how far would you be able to operate, assuming it's spread out fairly evenly throughout the year without receiving any additional funds? And so you'd be able to operate for twenty twenty-two, twenty-six percent into the year, which was within, or just, just exceeding the goal for the city to maintain. This is an important metric, it allows us to see the health of the fund and the fiscal responsibility of the city. That second bullet point there regarding the budget results for the budget for twenty twenty-two, there was a net positive budget variance. There's a quick summary there for you of the budget to actual for the year. So for the actuals, the revenues came in one point five million over what was budgeted. The total expenditures, we saw it was under budget by two point eight million. And then other sources and uses, we saw a positive variance there as well of one point eight million, giving you a combined total of a positive budget variance of six point two million. Assuming the city was able to accomplish everything you were seeking to accomplish for the year, that's a sign of a very healthy fiscal budget. Next, this is concerning the other two letters that came with the report. So there's two letters, communication with those charged with governance is that first letter. And that goes over various details pertaining to our responsibility as the auditor's management's responsibility over the audit. And there's a few other key factors I always like to point out. One, the audit was conducted in compliance with all ethics requirements regarding independence. Two, we encountered no difficulties with management. And then three, there were no uncorrected misstatements identified. That second letter is communication regarding internal controls. This is where we would list out any kind of findings or concerns. There was one recommendation that was considered an other matter and no material weaknesses identified. And so best we could hope for when looking at those internal controls and city's always looking to improve. Every time we bring anything, any type of recommendation to the finance department, they're quick to add it. So it's always exciting to have a client like that. We love to see it as auditors. So with that, I'll open it up with any questions you might have.
Questions from council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. My contact information is there, so if you think of any questions after the meeting, feel free to reach out. I'd be happy to help.
We appreciate you.
And I do want to thank Lori, sorry, before I close it. Their team is one of the best finance departments I've worked with. They provide support so quickly and they're very organized. So I think you guys should be very proud. They, you have a great crew here, so thank you all.
Thank you very much. And thank you to Lori and crew for, for all your hard work. Thank you very much. And thank you to Lori and crew for, for all your hard work. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to accept a 2021-2022 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as presented by Brooks Watson and Company.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Crowley and a second by Councilmember Thorne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 7, pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene in executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item as permitted by law, or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct conflicts with this chapter, and/or consult with attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551 dot 071. Conferr with city attorney regarding 700 West Main. Conferr with city attorney regarding city-owned property. Discuss the possible purchase, exchange, lease, or sell value of real estate property. Public discussion of such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining positions, Section 551 dot 072. City-owned property. The time is 6:51, and the council is now in executive session.